When they thought all had finished at some point in time, they pulled petrol on the building and the most of the majority of them were set ablaze. That in the course of this action, she saw a tree up when she lifted off her eyes and she raised her hands, head on the tree, climbed up where she was able to to hit herself. That her five children that she left below were crying and in her presence, they were being slaughtered by the terrorists.
People were murdered, killed in a in a church. Now, I want to ask this. So one question was, did things improve? I think the answer is no on that. Is here's the question. Proportionally, do we see Christians killing Muslims in Christian areas of Nigeria? The way that we are seeing radicalized Islamists killing Christians in Muslim areas of Nigeria?
And the alternatives presented prior to the president going on Truth Social and saying, we're going to go guns blazing into Nigeria?
We've been working on these problem sets in Nigeria for a long time.
Visuals from the public hearing convened yesterday by the United States Parliament. Well, welcome to Home Politicos. This enterprise elevation today on the broadcast. We zero in on a major, major international development. That's public hearing convened by the United States House Representatives, Representatives, Foreign Affairs Subcommittee in Africa focusing squarely on religious persecution in Nigeria. The hearing titled Conflict and Persecution in Nigeria, the case for a CPC designation as profound implications, not just for Nigeria, but for United States Africa relations. And the Subcommittee chaired by Congressman Chris Smith opened the hearing with a forceful address calling this moment a serious, well-founded wake-up call. Now, the central question before the lawmakers is simple, maybe not simple, not so simple. Should Nigeria be re-designated as a country of particular concern, tagged CPC under United States Religious Freedom Law? That label, the country of particular concern, if applied, could trigger a series of restrictive diplomatic and economic measures? This is in the Subcommittee's first time examining Nigeria. In March 2025, they held a hearing on exactly this topic, citing decades of violence, kidnappings and mass displacement against Christian communities in parts of Nigeria. Well, among the witnesses yesterday during the hearing were Bishop Wilfred Anagbe of Macody, who has survived and spoken fiercely about this attacks. Nino Ashia, too, the senior fellow at the Hudson Institute Center for Religious Freedom and that Oge Onu Bugu, director of the Africa Program at the Wilson Center. Of course, played you a clip of a victim of the recent Yewada attack in Benue State, where they were, well, the where we saw the massacre of over 200 residents there in Benue. Well, United States lawmakers expected to press for more than symbolic statements. They're pushing for targeted sanctions, humanitarian interventions, or possibly even a re-evaluation of United States-Nigeria relation, depending on how credible the evidence of persecution is judged to be. On the Nigerian side, the stakes too quite high. President Polatimba has already rejected the CPC designation, saying that mischaracterizes the country's commitment to religious freedom. Well, today on the broadcast, we're posing tough questions, very urgent questions, especially in the face of disturbing security challenges in the country. Just today, we witnessed another kidnapping. Well, you probably have followed the news ahead of the Quara situation, head of the kidnap of 25 female students in Kebi State. The president has deployed 900 troops there. Well, he has since sent the vice president there as well. He went there commiserated with the people of Kebi, returned to the federal capital territory to brief the president. But now the president has sent the Minister of State for Defense, Bello Matawali, former governor who reportedly had handled something similar in terms of kidnapping and rescue of schoolgirls. Well, he's been sent there now. Well, again, the tough questions today on the broadcast. How might this reshape Nigeria's foreign policy and internal security? And what would this hearing mean for Nigerians? To help make sense of this today, Home Politicos is Evans Ufeli, a constitutional lawyer, joins me virtually on the conversation. Many thanks for joining me today.
Very well. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Well, again, welcome to Home Politicos. Kingsley Bass is my name. Let's begin first with your assessment of what we saw, the first sitting of that hearing. Some have decided to compare that with the response of the Nigerian federal legislature to the killings in Nigeria. What do you say?
Well, I like the way America has taken it to Congress. Of course, President Trump cannot just step into Nigeria, gun a blazing, without approval of Congress. Okay, now Congress is dealing with the issue from the standpoint of law. Okay, and if you look at the spread, the thoughtfulness, and the quality legislative time invested in the conversation, would tell you that they have been thorough. They are looking at not just the economic implication for Nigeria, but for America inclusive, and other implications, both environmental and human, a human implication of the considerations before that table and the practical assessment of the issue under reference. Now, if you look at the leader of the committee, the thought, quality of thought being espoused there. One of the questions being asked is, if you say it's not a Christian genocide, it's not killing of Christians and all that, can you also espouse it? Whether as Christians are being killed in the northern area and in the Muslim-dominated area, are Muslims also being killed by Christians in a Christian-dominated area? That's one very critical intelligent question that I've not been answered by any of these persons who are living in denial. Okay, the US Congress is divided, as you speak. But from the quantum and totality of thoughtful together, many of the congressmen are of the view that there's a genocide.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and that that is intolerable. That will not be tolerated by the United States government. And so they are benchmarking the action of the Nigerian government that have been complicit, lackadaisical and indifferent about the issue, benchmarking it with the Holocaust, the, you know, genocidal effects, the implication the world over and the Islamic jihadist revivalist movement that is unacceptable because it's terroristic, it's an attack against humanity, not just Christians. And the effect of that is that if the entire world looked the other way, it therefore mean that someday they might as well wipe out the entire Christian race.
But what does this mean actually when a foreign legislature, particularly the United States Congress decides to open an inquiry into allegations of religious persecution in another sovereign nation?
It is not illegal. They have a law. Okay, that law you cited, it has to do with religious. You cited that law. I can't remember the full name of that law. I've read part of it. The fact that that law exists and the fact that Nigeria and America have a lot of bilateral, unilateral and a lot of trade relationship. Other than trade relationship, they also have human relationships. Okay, when you go into such a relationship with other countries, you you reduces the effects of sovereignty on those countries. Because don't forget, Americans are here. Okay, Americans are here. They have an embassy here. That shows a relationship, that's a bilateral relationship. They also have investments and they have their citizens here. That's one. Two, it's a Christian state. It's a Christian state. By that law, they are expected by that law to respond to anywhere Christians are being dealt with all over the world. Okay, it's a religious legislation. And they cannot sit and just, even most of them in Congress, most of them in Congress are not Christians. Some are just free thinkers. There are just different variation of people. One of the journalists that raised the issue, that first raised the issue earlier on, stated it clearly that it's not even a Christian, but he's looking at what is going on and it's dispossesses dispassionately. So it is, you don't have to be a Christian to respond to the call for the preservation of humanity. You don't have to. Where there is injustice, killings needlessly that affect the soul of humanity, there is always a need to, you know, lend your voice to the issue. Now, the painful thing about it is that the US is talking today, discussing this in parliament today because the Nigerian government have failed to act. Because Nigerian government is the first respondent to, you know, issues like this that affects Nigerians directly. They are supposed to be the first respondent. But when the first respondent abdicates his responsibility, when the first respondent is now, you know, you know, is in dereliction of its duty under the law to so act, then an external body that is concerned, that have a law that relate to that issue will respond, okay, in the face of indifference. Okay, so that does have one of the, it does not encroach on sovereignty.
Okay.
You're talking about sovereignty. Sovereignty determines democracy. What is sovereignty when sovereignty belongs to the people? That's what the Constitution says. Constitution says section 14, that sovereignty belongs to the people. When the people are killed, where is sovereignty? What is sovereignty? The people have been wiped off. It then belongs to who?
Well, let's, yeah, let's talk, let's talk then about, you know, some of these testimonies put forward by both lawmakers from the United States and indeed some Nigerians. We started the conversation on the program showing clips of a victim of the Yewada attack back in July. And it's such a touching story for a mother who carried different kids, five different kids for, you know, nine different months, watched them, watched herself breastfeed them, watched herself feed them to grow and then had to watch them slaughtered, massacred in broad daylight before her very side. Now, if this religious persecution is proven or strongly suggested based on these testimonies, not just of this victim from Benue, but other persons who have been, you know, making submissions, what then, from your point of view, are the legal implications for the Nigerian government domestically?
Well, the legal implication for the Nigerian government domestically is that the government have failed in its responsibility to protect the people. The government responsibility is to provide protection for the people. Okay, that is its first responsibility. And if it's unable to provide security for its people, it has failed in that regard. Okay, this woman under reference is also one among many persons or many women and children that have been ungodly put in situations where their life have been snipped out of there. And and the government, not only, not only that the government is in dereliction of our duties, it has not made attempt, not one, to secure the life of those left. That's a painful thing. Okay, now they have attacked, now they have taken the lives of thousands. It has not put anything in place to preserve the lives of the people left. That is what is worrisome. And that is what the American government is saying, that it can't sit and then watch this level of, you know, this level of killings and this level of lack of care for the citizens or protection of citizens of a sovereign nation. You see, the reason you are called a sovereign nation is is under the presumption that you are able to protect the lives and properties of citizens. That's why you are called a sovereign nation. You are called a sovereign nation not just because you can ward off internal and external aggression or you have a right to be left alone with your problem. No, even the United Nations send soldiers for keep.
Peacekeeping missions?
Peacekeeping, peacekeeping mission across the world. Because any country that, you know, is signed to the UN, assigned to that charter to be protected. First of all, it's even the United Nations that guaranteed whether you're a country or not. Okay, within the purview of the United Nations to designate geographically areas on earth and consider them as countries when they meet the specifications. Okay, so by that talking, you are signing into that treaty. The treaty therefore guarantees that there must be peace and stability the world over. So where there's absence of peace and stability, where there are killings, it is a concern of United Nations to ensure that peace is brought down. And for countries that have legislations that gives them authority across borders and have bilateral, multilateral relationship with other countries, have the right under the law to exercise same. Sovereignty does not mean you are reclusive. That is why we have an embassy in the US and that's why they have one here.
Let's talk about what practical results could arise from this hearing. Sanctions, policy shifts, diplomatic pressure. What could possibly be the result?
Well, the result is that it will working them up from their slumber. I mean, talking about the leaders of the country, the political leaders who have a responsibility, who have the mandate of the people to protect them. Okay, these sanctions will play a very significant role because we know the ties that they have with foreign countries, like the US, UK and the rest of that. And mind you, this law that America is applying, they are about to apply, they have some extra geographical effects with first world countries wherein our politicians and our political leaders have invested so much in. Most of them have their children in the US, the UK and the rest of that, the first world countries. And this legislation have a way of getting through, you know, their resources, their well-being, their ties with these countries and to go as far as affecting their medical tourism. Okay, which will mean that they will have to deal with this situation the way they ought to deal with it as a government. Okay, because we have seen that, I mean, probing this issue, you can see from the clear point that the Americans even complained that even congressmen, talking about parliaments, parliaments in Nigeria National Assembly, okay, are also of the view that there's no genocide. Many of them are the reader, there is no genocide, the rest of that. Try to defend indefensible. So policy shifts, correct, yes. I mean, sanctions, fine, we're going to get all that. Okay, but I think the last resort, the last resort is stepping into the country, stepping into Nigeria to take the Islamic terrorists out. That's, that's, that's the last resort for this. If I were to stem the tide with sanction and the rest of that, fine. And if that, if that cannot take out the issue whatsoever, the US thinks they want to do. I've listened to persons who said that they are going to come and take our resources and as a source of after and the rest of that. Even if they are after our resources, does it mean that, does that, is that a yastic? Or is that a, is that the reason you shouldn't take care of the people that you took and ought to defend? Is that a reason you shouldn't, you know, deploy the necessary security apparatus to secure the country? So their excuses are flimsy.
Well, talking, talking, you know, more results, not necessarily from the hearing now, but the implications of what's happening now. Just days ago, the Secretary to the Government of the Federation, George Okume, blamed the recent attacks and kidnappings that we've seen in the country on President Donald Trump, saying his comments warranted this, that this bandits, if you call them that, this terrorists have found the, you know, for that, well, say, defundry to continue this attacks because he made that statement. How do you respond to that?
But clearly, no, no, that was a very responsible statement to make. That was very responsible. When they killed at Yellow Water, how many people did they kill? Well, Trump had not made any statement then. When they were killing in Joss, Southern Karuna, Rono and all those places, the American government had made no statement whatsoever. So I disagree. I disagree. There is like, you know, this man from Platu said that's an ethnic cleansing or religious cleansing. That's what is going on. The genocide was going on. I do not agree. It's a bad argument to say because Trump, when every day, we're having these attacks, every day. The typical death happened a quarter year. And the other one that happened in Yobe, there was one, another kidnapping that happened in Yobe before this, this, this one. Okay, so I do not think that is the case. Our leaders have not been able to track, not only are they not able to defend the citizens, they are not even able to track the intentionality of the criminality going on. They are not able to track it. That is unfortunate.
Let's talk about very quickly, I mean, something, some might think this particular point of view or this perspective is trivia. Well, why, why, why concern ourselves with the public perception of Nigeria? But I'd like to think that it's a valid conversation to have. How do you think this hearing might affect Nigeria's global perception? Especially on matters concerning human rights, minority protection?
It is further managing the image of Nigeria in the international community. Yes, because what it means is that you have leadership that cannot rise to the occasion. Okay, it even have security implication within the African hemisphere. Because now the the bandits, the terrorists and the surgeons can clearly see through our security architecture that Nigeria have no capacity. That's what it is. When neighboring African countries, the Sia States and all those areas in Africa that pose a threat.
Pardon me, is it, is it that we don't have the capacity to deal with this situation? Or we like the political will to do so, or maybe both?
If you are not, if you are not deploying the political will, it means you have no capacity. Capacity is the confidence to lay and deploy the right security apparatus to protect absolutely the citizens of the country. When the American citizen was captured, okay, Americans sent, I think, there were just six, six soldiers that came, rescued their citizens and left the country. The Nigerian army was not even aware. The Nigerians, Nigerians were not even aware until the news broke out. So that's what I'm saying. There must be absolutism in terms of security. Securing the Nigerian citizens should become a big deal. It, it, because a citizen is, you know, a citizen is a part and parcel of the country. So we shouldn't be losing citizens in their homes. When you go to bed now, before you wake up, you wake up, there will be 300 and be killed again and the rest of that. In one week, in one week, how many persons have died in one week? From 2019, they have killed 52,000 people. There are some villages and there are some community where they are not up to 52,000. 52,000.
That, 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 that will half the entire population of the smallest country that has qualified for the FIFA World Cup in 2026.
Very well, that's like almost the population of your country. And that is, that's painful. Okay, so, so the, the, the excuse from the Secretary of State and the rest of that is not viable.
Let's, let's, before we wrap the conversation, talk about the quality of debates we've seen during this hearing, the quality of debate and the power of opposition in a democratic setting. We see Republicans put their case forward. We see Democrats put their case forward. Right, let's, you know, place that side by side with the Nigerian legislature where we're seeing defections from several small or smaller political parties or political parties, not necessarily small, but with, you know, few legislators. Move now to the ruling all progresses Congress. And we're seeing the quality of debate and opposition, both at the Green and Red Chambers' lesson. What lessons can we learn, can we pick from this?
The lesson we can pick from this is that for the American Congress, you can see the role of critical thinking. You can see the role of reasoning, robust debates. Being a lawmaker is not about power. It's about responsibility. It's about responding to the yarns and aspiration of the people of your constituency. That is what it's about. But in that of Nigeria, why is this killing is ongoing? They are busy defecting for one political party to the other. Governors who have not been able to protect their own citizens are defecting for PDP to APC. It is not a bad responsibility for the Nigerian. It is not about critical thinking or quality of thought or debate. It's about power. It's about power, it's about resources, it's about dominance and the rest of that. So the people are an afterthought in democracy under the Nigerian or the Africans' hemisphere. Conversely, in the US, in the UK, the people cannot be an afterthought. The people are the engine room of governance. It's about the people. When the price of goods rise, they debate it in parliament. Goes as, as trophy as coffee, milk, it is discussed in parliament. Okay, and the rest of that. Here, in, in, in our country Nigeria, there is no debate on pricing, cost of living and the rest of that, nothing like that. There is no debate on pricing, cost of living and the rest of that, nothing like that. Rather, they prefer to debate on how uh the penalty for defilement. Have become life imprisonment when already that legislation had already said so. So, the Nigerian parliamentarian have no record of our laws, have no history of our laws. Do not, cannot even differentiate the different legislations we have.
Hmm.
Do not even know the penalty that accrue to offenses. Uh uh committed and the rest of that. That is why they spend legislative legislative time. Sitting over an existing le- legislation that already have a penalty and arriving at the same penalty again.
Hmm.
So they did that recently. So, that that is, I don't have lawmakers, don't have lawmakers. That, that, that was a long shot of it.
Oh, well, uh to wrap the conversation uh today, Honorable Politicos, let's very quickly talk about, uh. Well, maybe I save that for the last. What would be your thought uh for the likes, the leadership of the National Assembly? I'm talking the President of the Senate, Guti, Barack Obama, as well as um. Uh the Speaker of the House of Representatives, uh right Honorable Tadjudin Tavas. Both gentlemen, I mean, should they have followed before now in the footsteps of the United States Legislature. Uh put together a joint committee that should have, uh you know, held a public hearing. Calling the people of these communities to come, you know, speak their minds. Though we have representatives of these communities there, it looks like they've not taken this seriously as it should be. What would you be saying to them?
What they ought to do, they, both the Speaker of the House and the uh uh House of Rep and that of Senate. Uh the President, what they ought to do now is to give the President a matching order. That is it. He said, because this dereliction is gross misconduct under the law, it's an impeachable offense. What they suppose, under a proper democratic system that's supposed to commence and uh uh commence uh. An impeachment proceeding against President Bolatino for incompetence or gross misconduct, you know. And for that indifference. That's what they ought to have, ought to do. Because the people being killed are people who they represent. The Yewata we talked about, they they have a lawmaker in the house who's doing nothing, you know? In that part of Quara where they attacked just this last week, they have a lawmaker in the house, okay? At the state level, they have a lawmaker. At the state level, they have a local government chairman. So what are they doing, what what are they all doing? You understand? Ha. So they give the executive a matching order. That's what the legislature ought to do. Oversight function. Oversight function. That's what they're supposed to do on that, what democracy, but our democracy is sick. Our system is lopsided. The other day, the Senate President was singing for the President that things are getting better. That is, that's a job of oversight that we see here. So, we have messed up democracy. We have given it an unknown name. We have made everything about it of no refuge. And that is unfortunate to say the least.
All right, we'll just leave things there. I'd like to thank you so much, uh Barista and Solicitor of the Supreme Court of Nigeria. Constitutional lawyer, advanced for your comment and time on the broadcast. Well, we continue to monitor this development with the hearing that the United States Congress was the review testimonies and pieces. Evidence brought forward by uh several individuals and institutions regarding this matter. And Nigerians have been testifying, lawmakers there, the United States Congress testifying as well regarding this matter. Well, again, would monitor development and bring those your way. Uh well, this call, this uh proceedings. Could lead to Nigeria as a country being designated and backed, you know, by legislators in America. Uh backing now the uh United States President Donald Trump's call for uh designating Nigeria as a country of particular concern. And of course, that that comes with lots and lots of implications, some of which my guest this morning, today. Honorable Politicos has talked about. Many thanks again for being there. Stop by the comment section, let me know what you think. I'll be reading, will be watching and reading your comments and most likely replying to your comments regarding this. When Nigerians, uh we've seen several uh security, uh you know, breaches this past few days. The latest uh is the report of the kidnapping of some more students, including staff members of a school, Catholic run school. In Nigeria state. I told you at the start of the program, the president has since deployed nine hundred troops to Quara. Uh to deal with the situation there. Uh well, besides that, the president has sent the Minister of State for Defence, Bello Matawale. To Derby State to deal with uh uh the situation of the kidnapping of twenty five schoolgirls. We hear one since returned, skipping from uh the the kidnappers. But will this yield results? Will this moves by the federal government of Nigeria? Uh anyway, to affect the proceedings happening in the United States. I need to remind you to uh that there was a high powered dedication of the federal government of Nigeria. Uh to the United States. Uh Reps Riley Moore did mention that too. And that dedication was led by the National Security Advisor, Nuri Badu. Uh there is a part of that, the Inspector General of Police as well as the Minister of Defence. Well, we'll see how things go with this and where this leads Nigeria as a country. One thing to show, we want to see the stop to this killings. We want to live peaceful lives and go about the businesses legitimately. Until next time, Honorable Politicos, um uh it it just uh. Well, I'll say, may God continue to bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. I'll leave you with some more clips from the hearing. Uh held Thursday, November twenty 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 five, Kingsley. Basis, my name is said. May God continue to bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Bye for now.
You've described as much more appropriate and I look forward to um to seeing what comes out of that. You know, we had Ambassador Kelly Curry here before uh before a different subcommittee of this committee, former Trump appointee. Um and she said in front of the committee in a hearing yesterday, I think it's a very relevant quote. You cannot solve problems created by men with guns by turning to men with guns for this solution. And I just would urge us to think about that. This is coming from a Trump uh appoint, former Trump appointee. I think if we were to do this, it would just serve to further radicalize communities and risk turning the aggression. Of actors like Boko Haram and ISIS West Africa directly to the United.
I think the answer is no on that. Uh is, uh here's the question. Proportionally, do we see Christians killing Muslims in Christian areas of Nigeria? The way that we are seeing radicalized Islamists killing Christians in Muslim areas of Nigeria?
What I can tell you, Representative Hizenga, is that Christians are disproportionately targeted based on their population.
Exactly. And by the way, for those that you can't pick up with the microphones, there's audible yeses behind you. Again, the people that are watching, who are nodding their heads. Why? Because they have lived this. Their families have lived this. I went to school with kids from Nigeria. We've got neighbors who've been missionaries there, who have family there, who have friends there. Who know this is going on. Yet we've got not just the mass media, we've got people within the Congress denying that this is happening. Or certainly de-emphasizing it. It ought to be outrageous that it is Christians, moderate Muslims. Anyone being terrorized by these radicalized Islamists in Nigeria. And we've got the Tanubu government sitting back and not doing enough. And I recently just was interviewed by Nigerian television, Arise TV. And that was really their question. Is the Tanubu government doing enough? And I had to answer, no, they are not. And I do not understand how a delegation can come here to the United States. And downplay and come up with all of these other excuses as to why this is allowed to happen. It should be rejected and should be called out for what it is. And I um I've got a couple of other questions that my time has expired, that I'm going to have to go. Uh and 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 ask for them in written uh responses. But uh I'm gonna, one of them I need to highlight is, uh in in Benaway State, there's one point four million people. Who are, who are considered internally displaced. Understanding that the administration has supported refugee assistance in dozens of other countries since taking office. What humanitarian assistance support are you providing or plan to provide to the IDPs in Benaway and Taraba states? Uh where many of those Christian uh communities reside. And uh I'll have to take the answer in writing. And Mister Chairman, with your, with your indul- indulgence, just to, just to show the breadth of this. I want to uh uh put in, submit for the record.